Pro temp will carry out the presidential duties until such time as the board elected president, or vice president is present. So, we need to have a, I guess we need to figure out who our most senior board member is.
Maybe Thomas?
I think so too, man. He doesn't say consecutive years, so... Mr. President? You get to convene the meeting.
Can I see your cheat sheet?
Yes, absolutely. And...
I'm glad you came, Tom.
Yeah. So, and then what you do is call the meeting to order, followed with roll call.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:34. We start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allison? Mr. Hazelhorse?
Here.
Mr. Harvilly? Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mahon?
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion, and then a second for the president, President Pro Temp, and then a roll call.
Move to nominate Tom Kinzer to be President Pro Temp.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
That and that.
I put just cheaters there for you. Everything's possible.
Okay. I guess that takes us to item three. Oh, yeah, item three, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we have a roll call in that, please?
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes. Next item is the audience to visitors.
We do have one, yes. Mr. Randall. Mr. Randall.
Hi, I'm William Randall. You've seen me here before. I'm guessing, I'm substitute custodian and substitute teacher for the district. And I see tonight that you're approving the substitute pay scale for this year with no changes from last year. I know right now, we have three vacancies for permanent custodian staff members that are unfilled, and I know that the district has a posting on their website for substitute custodians, and it's been on there since 2015. So, there is a need for it that is, we're not filling it. So, I'm wondering if maybe the district could see fit to at least bump the substitute custodian pay up, you know, I mean, I don't know what's in your budget or what you could afford, but maybe try and increase that amount, maybe towards the bottom of the substitute custodian pay scale? Because that difference seems to be growing. So, I just, you know, that's basically what I had to say tonight. I know I've been called numerous times by Jim to come and fill in. Sometimes why I'm already working for the district is the substitute teacher, so I know the needs there for subs. And as far as the substitute teachers, I think the pay for that is in line with the surrounding districts, higher than some, lower than some. So, I'm fine with that, but I do know there is also a need for that, because I get phone calls at home personally on my cellphone, "Could you please come and work tomorrow?" I mean, so I know there's a need for that as well. But, you know, I am just, I'd like, you know, maybe to see a little something for the custodians, because I know there is a need. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for helping out.
We've kept him busy. Thank you.
Yeah.
That takes us to the next item, the treasures report.
Yes. I know Melissa put an updated one in your signed copy today from Mark. Melissa, was there anything else that would change, or was it all pretty much the same just?
No, I changed the format of the treasures report a little bit and added in the money marketing council. It was just a little bit clearer on our checking the money market. So, I was thinking about the format of everything.
If there's any questions, I'm sure Melissa will be happy to answer.
Do we use the roll call? Accepted? No? No questions on that? Move on to the super games report.
Um, thank you. Yep, got a few things tonight. First off, I want to say that Capran is very happy to receive another $9,000 from the state of Illinois, and some pre-K money to upgrade and do some more upgrades to their pre-K playground there. So, we're very thankful to have that. We were notified this week, or in the past few weeks here, that we're not one of the school districts to receive the pre-K grant this year, or the 21st Learning Century grant. That was the one where we were looking to get extra money towards tutoring. We did put a formal request in in both of those to find out what it was that we were lacking and what we need to do to make it a little more competitive for those grants. So, we're waiting to hear back the formal reply about how they evaluated that. Pre-K this year was the first time was competitive. Usually we've made, we've usually gotten the grant from the state. They changed it to a competitive format this year. We have not gotten our formal letter back from them. But, one of the things we did notice was is that when they took the needs factors or the needs considerations of districts into effect, we were not towards the bottom. We were well up the list a ways. So, based on some of the SSA things, I'm not sure what that's got to play in it, but we're not sure if they diverted more money towards districts with need. So, when I get some more back on that, I'll keep you guys informed on how they rated our competitive grants. So, I would like to put together a business meeting. I've had initial conversations with Ed. I wanted to see if the board was okay. We're looking at July 11th to, at 6:30 to do a business meeting, ramp out the budget for next year, expenditures, revenues, talks about some specific things that we're looking to do for the year 2018, 2019. By policy, I have to have the budget presented to the board in July. Then we, again, present it to the public in August, so it can be on display for 30 days and approved in September. So, looking for a little feedback. Does July 11th work okay for a business meeting? Talk about our budget and budget projections. How's that look for you, Tom?
Good for me.
Good. Summer's hard with vacations and...
What time do we typically do those?
We usually typically do them at 6:30, but I'm flexible if you guys need to adjust times. Ed, you're still okay with that?
I'm still okay with 6:30, Tom. Does that work for you, sir?
Yeah, it works, sir.
July 11th, 6:30?
Yeah, keep it somewhere around the 5:00 or 5:30, 6:00, somewhere around there.
Okay, okay. You'd like to move it up a little bit?
Oh, no, just anytime after 5:00.
Okay, gotcha.
6:30 will work for me, too.
Gotcha.
Whatever works for you guys.
Okay, sounds good. One thing I think I put in your update last week is the state announced that they will be covering the cost of PSAT for grades nine and 10, which is good news and good move for us, because that is something that we have moved towards as having our ninth and 10th graders taking it. They will be doing the PSAT in early April, and our 11th graders take the SAT in April, later April. So, that'll help our kids get used to that format of testing, and us understand where those kids are sitting for the PSAT and the SAT. And the last announcement, I know she talked about it a little bit, but if you're looking to go to the board conference, Kelly is able to make reservations now. We'd encourage you, if you know your plans, to get it in early so that you can get the hotel of your choice, and let us know. We'll try to get that booked and reserved for you. So, that's all I got. Any questions? Oh, one other thing, I just wanted to update you. Our buildings are moving along, and I put in our last couple of updates. Bathroom remodeling is already going on down at Poplar Grove. I probably shouldn't be talking about it tonight, but the roofing will start after 4th of July sometime at Capran, so I'm hoping it's holding up with what we've got right now. But, I have not heard anything negative, so, yes, sir?
Not the wall at the high school, it's still...
Parts are on order. That should be coming shortly, too, so that we can get that fixed. Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions on that? So, next item, committee reports, policy?
We have not met any, we don't have anything planned for it.
We will need to at some point. We just got another batch. My thought was, there's nothing earth-shattering if we want to do something in August. When people get back, we could hold a policy meeting then.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, maybe at next meeting, we can set that, right?
Yeah, yeah, the next meeting would be later, because I'm gonna be gone.
People will be back, and quorum's easier.
Business services?
We're gonna meet on the 11th to go over the budget. Would encourage everyone to come. You know, it's an opportunity to dig in a little bit deeper to what we're doing and have questions answered.
And with better detail, a lot more of the detail, yeah.
Right, so that when we do get to the public meeting, everybody feels a little bit more comfortable about where we are.
Perfect.
Facilities, long-range planning?
Oh, we haven't met. We'll probably meet in August before school resumes.
And we're still, we'll need to get some representative scheduled for some other, either solar, geothermal, or some of those representatives that we talked about. So, Jim and I will work on that to get that rolled by August. Okay?
And Brad, I know we're perking in the committee.
They did meet, I missed the meeting.
I can fill you in, though, if you want. We did, we met, we met May 30th. We had a chance to review the math intervention thing that we've been talking about the last few meetings. So, that seemed to be good, and everybody was acceptance of that. We also talked about AP and some of the factors that affect AP, and really, it was a short, quick meeting, but good discussion, so...
You said there were no changes on the...
The UE?
The UE?
No.
All right. That takes us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Hold on a second. I don't think we've ever had that prevailing wage thing on the consent agenda. I think that's always been a separate vote.
The, my recollection, the reason that was always a second vote is because the former board president wanted that individually to...
I'm following you right with you. And if you're happy with it being on the consent, so am I then.
I think that's the only reason...
I'm just going off a memory of always voting on it.
That's what I...
A second Mary's approval of the consent agenda.
Let me, let me throw something in there, because, yeah, that's the way I kind of remember was, we'd always have it in there, somebody'd pull it off, and then they'd vote on that separately. So, I know where you're going with that, yep.
So, we have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
That takes us down to unfinished business, phone system upgrade.
Yes. Randy was able to get another bid, so we're recommending that the board approve the phone system upgrade to Heartland Business Systems, as he put in his rationale. First time we're using this. We tabled it from last month. Thank you for another suggestion. This one worked, and it was significantly lower, so finding the qualified bidders was decent, but we're recommending Heartland for $9,939. Have you worked with them, Tom?
I have not worked with them. The company I'm employed with uses them, and they're a top-notch company, so I would have no, if they've looked at it, I saw the statement of work, it looks like they know what they're doing.
Good. Actually, nice to have another bidder, because Randy was struggling to find, so thank you for the suggestion.
They're actually, Heartland is at the November conference, and I told Randy that I talked to them at the conference, and they actually, if you remember, probably when you were in administration, there was a company that Dr. Ball outsourced the network and troubleshooting to, and Heartland acquired that company. So, they're, that person was even familiar with North Boone, although I don't know if they would be coming in here, but it's a company we've had things to do with before.
It was helpful suggestion, thank you.
So, any further discussion on that item, or...
Make a motion to approve the phone system upgrade as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have additional discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
The upper elementary, middle school...
Same proposal as we presented last time. Last time we were at the board meeting, we wanted to bring it back to the curriculum committee one more time to make sure that everybody was comfortable from the committee bringing this forward. It's the exact same thing, and the curriculum committee was very comfortable with the way it was presented, so I'm recommending that we approve the motion.
Make a motion. Hmm? I was gonna say, make a motion to approve the upper elementary, middle school math intervention program.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Gets us down to new business, June 2018 bills.
Anything look good? Make a motion to approve the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion on the June bills? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Item B, approval of the student handbook, 2018 to 2019.
Yeah, this is something we bring forward every year, to have the board approve the handbook walking into the new school year. We had just a few minimal changes, and I was gonna let Heather give a summary of what we changed, and then we're gonna ask the board to approve the student handbook for 2018, '19 school year.
Yeah, it's a pretty long document. There were only a couple of things changed, just in general, on page 41, in the health section. The Illinois Department of Public Health suggested that we make changes to our handbook in that, in the past, we have excluded students with NITS and LICE. The Illinois Department of Public Health recommends that you cannot exclude students with NITS, only with live LICE. So, we did change the wording in that to reflect the recommendations from the Illinois Department of Public Health. Fun topic that was changed. Barb Sager and I were in communication about that. And then there are changes made to the athletic handbook, that is also in the handbook, changes made regarding cuts and students, how they try out for teams. If a team has cuts, they are not allowed to take two spots, so they'll have to choose a team, basically, to pick if there are tryouts for that team. If they're not tryouts, they can run currently on both sports, but if there are tryouts, they will have to pick, so they don't take someone else's spot. And then there was a statement removed by recommendation from our attorney regarding guilt by association, basically, at parties where alcohol or other substances were involved. We did remove that statement in there, and the high school staff will work with students that are involved in any cases regarding that. So, we just did remove, based on recommendations from our attorney, in that, for that language. Those were the only changes made to the handbook, just regarding health, and then some stuff regarding eligibility for athletes in my opinion.
I guess I'm not clear, when you say the high school will work to determine guilt...
No, the high school staff will do their investigations, and the policy is lined out how they perceive for first offenses, second offenses. The high school will work with those students. It just, they recommended in the past, if a student was at a party...
Added party where alcohol was involved.
It was a guilt by association, so you were guilty for being at the party. There have been instances in the past, I believe legally, where students were at parties, they were given breathalyzers, they blew zeros, so they were not drinking, and then they were so held to standard.
And that's been tried in courts now, and that's been failing, so our attorney's recommendation was is you can no longer do that. You can still investigate to see if that kid was drinking, but if they've blown zeros by a test or something from the law officials, and a parent wants to contest you on it, schools have been losing those, so that's why they advise us to just take that clause out, if that makes sense.
That's still only, that's still only directed towards kids participating in extracurriculars?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't touch any other kids?
I don't believe so, no.
No.
Held to a higher standard there?
Do we have a...
Make a motion to approve the student handbook as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any additional questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahon?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Item C, cheerleading stipend.
Yeah, with our new NBEA teacher contract agreement, we have a committee that we agreed to form that meets each spring to kind of review the extracurricular stipends we have, the student involvement programs, and the needs, so that we kind of make sure that our stipends reflect what our new kind of needs are at each of the schools. So, the committee met in May. The recommendation that emerged from that committee was to, one, add a stipend for competitive cheer. Competitive cheer is something that has really kind of taken off with a lot of districts, and as you know, we've had good success with it, but it also's been requiring a lot of time for our kids and our coaches that participate in it. And what we did is we compared to what they practice and the number of times that they did and looked for a similar category. So, it is considered separate from football and basketball. We have basketball cheerleaders and football cheerleaders that'll do home games. If a cheerleader wanted to, they could just do the competitive cheer. They're considered three different sports. But, obviously, as you can imagine, a lot of the cheerleaders do both sports and the competitive cheer together. So, we looked to put that in it as a category four, which was similar to what some of the other practice times were, competition times, and then camp times, too, because some of the camps that go with it as well. The other one that we did was we looked to eliminate the SAD stipend under category seven. That was for the students against drunk driving. That's just been kind of a stipend that's not been used over the last several years, and we don't anticipate it being used going forward, just with the change in times here kind of, that that group doesn't meet. So, those were the two recommendations that came out from that committee. We'd look for the board to approve that, and what we'd do is a memorandum of understanding with the NBEA on those stipends.
So, just to clarify, a competitive cheer has tryouts before school is out for the summer. They practice all summer. A student that was part of competitive cheer that tried out for that team, made the team, would not then be allowed to try out for volleyball, correct?
My gosh, I believe under the way it is, isn't it, they're only out for that one sport?
That's the change you made to the handbook?
Yes, if there are tryouts, if there are enough girls that warrant cuts.
Cuts, okay.
Then they would, they'd have to choose their sport.
Choose one.
But, both sports would have to be cutting people for that to take effect. So, if one sport wasn't cutting people, they would be okay playing two sports?
Yes.
I just want to understand what we're doing.
No, that's good.
If they tried out for competitive cheer and made the team, and volleyball has tryouts, they're not eligible to try out for volleyball, correct?
I think it depends, because I think volleyball runs from like August till October, for the most part, so knowing that the coaches, they'd probably work with the students and allow them to do the volleyball team during that season, because competitive cheer doesn't start till late October.
Competitive cheer starts later October and goes more through the winter months. But, I know what you're kind of saying, Ed, is if there's a conflicting sport, and there's one that's got cuts and one doesn't...
We just voted to change the handbook, and we're already backpedaling under area. Volleyball won't be over until the end of October. Kids are already part of the team. So, I just, I want, I want, I just want to understand what we, what we just did. So, I was along with probably where we were heading with this, but I think that if you say that, well, they don't really overlap, that's gonna be a problem.
And depending on how far you go into a tournament or something like that, it could. I guess the way I'm looking at it is, and you might have to explain a little bit further, if, if both sports needed players and there's not cuts, I don't, I think the coaches would work to work that out. If there's one with cuts, that's, I...
And to be honest, I don't know when competitive cheer tryouts are. I know at other districts, they do sideline cheer camp in that spring, you know, summer into fall, and then tryouts for competitive cheer are later in the season. I don't honestly know when the tryouts are for competitive cheer. But, typically, they're later on in the season after that, so then they ramp that up, because as the other one's dying down, they're ramping up the practice schedule for the other one. Because I don't believe they run competitive practice and sideline at the same time, because it's during football season, so they wouldn't be running two concurrent practices.
They're different, and it can be different groups of girls, too.
Correct. Again, it all kind of depends on what tryouts are.
Boys and girls.
Oh, boys and girls, you're right. I gotta quit thinking so old-school. You're right. Thank you for correcting me.
I'm thinking it applies more, and it may apply in this case, but I'm thinking if I'm a male athlete and I want to try out for baseball and soccer, because they both take place in the spring, and there's enough for both teams, I think that's when you're gonna run into the situation where they have to maybe pick if there are tryouts. I think, you know, like, girls run cross-country in the fall, and volleyball, there's usually not cuts for cross-country, because they take as many girls as they can, so they really don't have a choice in that instance where they have to pick. And I don't know how many girls go out, I think it just depends.
And they usually only keep eight to 12.
And I think some years, the numbers are bigger, and they have to cut, you know, a couple, some they take everyone.
I think they've had to use cuts since cheer, the last several years, or the last couple of years, anyways.
Before I was going with it, to expand on it, was that theoretically, you could have tryouts for competitive cheer, and competitive cheer season starts in October, have tryouts for basketball cheerleaders, you would be excluding the competitive cheer cheerleaders from being on the sidelines for basketball.
If there's cuts in both, they'd have to be...
They only said cuts in one.
Yeah, so if you're only getting cuts in one, you're still okay with either sport being in both sports, right?
Depends on which one, if one tried out two days first and there was cuts, you really shouldn't be able to try out for the other one.
But, if there's no cuts in that other one, it shouldn't matter then, right?
I think it's more you're honoring the kids that got cut in the first round.
Yeah, and I don't want...
When you have the ability to play two sports, and now you're not.
I think the idea behind it was someone wasn't taking a spot or holding a spot, and then that person then decided they didn't want to be on that team, and then someone else didn't get an opportunity to play. So, I think that's kind of the idea behind it, is, well, I try out, I'm doing both, and I, you know, someone else that maybe could've gotten a chance to play doesn't get to, and then, you know, they drop that spot, and they don't, they don't play, and they didn't pick up that chance.
I'd hate speculating, because I know what you're saying, Ed. Would it be easier to have somebody come in and speak when they have a situation like that?
No, I just, I just want to understand where it is that we're going. I already know why this came in, Ed. I think that you guys all know why this came in, too. I'm not sure we fixed it.
Okay.
So, I'm just, I'm just asking, I guess politely, that maybe this needs to go back and be reviewed a little bit more, so that there's, so we don't have any gray areas. There shouldn't be any questions about what we're trying to do.
Or causal...
To expand on what Heather's trying to say, what I envisioned the policy change being[1718.83] being was that essentially, you're trying to get more kids to participate in extracurriculars.
Exactly.
What you're leaving, it is still leaving too many gray areas with some of the overlaps, particularly of a sport like competitive cheer.
But if I worked with a clarification from administration on a situation like that, and brought it back to the board, shared it with you, and...
So, they understand.
Then, then the board knows how they're gonna handle it.
And it's being communicated to the parents.
Got you.
Do we need to revisit our vote, so we can, do we have to go back on our vote here for the approval of the handbook, or?
As I was sitting here and watching this all unfold, I just started thinking about as my experience as coach, all of the situations that came up that don't fit neatly into what the handbook's going to say. I mean, I could go on all night, but I think we understand that it's a little bit more complicated. The intent is, is outstanding. I love the idea that we're trying to get more kids to participate, but I think there's gonna be too many, too many conflicts.
No, I think that's a good point, because you're not, you're looking to be proactive on it, not reactive.
And all the handbook says is no student will be allowed to participate on multiple teams if cuts were used to establish the team members of either, which is what the handbook states.
Let me get some clarification, though, and I'll share it with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So, we have a recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the competitive cheer stipend. And the elimination of the SAD stipend.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? And that is a roll call, is what?
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes. So, it's item D, smart board replacement parts.
Yes, we're asking the board to approve replacement parts from COTG at $14,352. Jerry and the tech department go through each year and assess all of our needs for smart board repairs and, and what's needed to fix them up and have them ready for the school year, for school year. We got asked for quotes from four companies. We got three back, and COTG was our best. That meets our needs and lowest by far, so.
Discussion on this one?
Motion to approve the smart board replacement parts from COTG.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
This takes us to executive session, and I'm a little confused here. These two items...
Yes, so what you'll do is a motion to go into executive session four, and then you leave one in number 10.
Before we jump in, that, would it have any value to follow up on Mr. Randall's suggestion and maybe look at where we're at with some of these substitute pays? I know it was on the consent agenda. We went ahead and proved it. It doesn't have to just stay there.
We can always bring it back again if we wanted to. So, yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we look at what some of our other subpays are? I know we just looked at the teacher one. I didn't stare at the custodial one, but we can go back and do that. Our, our teacher one, we are towards the top of it, not at the top, but towards the top, so, and a lot of districts have held it the same. Yeah, it doesn't hurt to go look at it.
It's, it seems like we're struggling with that and with, with the...
Why don't we...
TAs and stuff. Maybe if you guys could have something for the business services meeting.
And what he brought up is there's an extension to that conversation that probably needs to take place about pools and stuff like that, too. So, what I'd probably suggest is why don't we bring something back to the business meeting, too, and talk about how that fits?
What specific pools do you want to look at? All of the substitution pay?
I think that probably the right way to do it would be to look at how many classroom or how many positions went unfilled last year, and where we're at with pay.
Not just our support staff. It's everywhere.
Thank you.
Because it leads into the next piece about staffing. It really does.
So, then we're ready for executive session? Make a motion for the appointment to, I guess, to convene into executive session for the appointment. Employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And we're also gonna go in for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
We have to go time or?
Then we get in there.
Second.
Want to do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the 2018-19 contract as presented for Allah Darquin, physical therapist.
Second.
Make a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the 2018-19 contract as presented for Sarah Krieger, occupational therapist.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the wage increases for non-bargaining certified and non-certified as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
And I make a motion to approve the wage increases for transportation salaries as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.